Who knew? I feel compelled to go by that clock, even though the other ones say six. All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, our work session. I just realized that my clock, the clocks here are a little different than that one, so we're right on time. Okay, we're going to open with a public hearing. This is for the Alcohol, the Alcoholic Beverages Privilege License Application for Silver's Caribbean Restaurant at forty-six thirty-four Rockbridge Road, for on-premises retail sale and consumption. So it's open to the public, feel free to come up and speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My wife, Frowen Nitegai, which is the applicant, is me, her husband, and was the previous owner also because of health reasons, was lost and rented, but was not managed good, so we don't try to offer it.
Awesome.
I'm sorry, you might be.
Sure, sure. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Do you want me to repeat what I say, or it's?
Say it one more time. Yeah, then the people that are tuning in will be able to hear.
Okay. My wife, Frowen Nitegai, which is the applicant, is me, her husband, and was the previous owner also because of health reason. We was absent and rented, and it was not managed good. I was working with the city and everything, so we had to evict the old tenant there. There was a lot of mess, I'm sure the cities are aware about it. And we went to be part of it and manage it better. Some of you know, you know us, so we are new for the community.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
So we're not voting on anything tonight, it's just the public hearing to hear anybody who's for or against, or any questions, so. Does council have any questions?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Very anticlimactic, yeah. We're glad to have you back, thank you. Yeah. Okay, any other public comment regarding the alcoholic beverage privilege license application that's in front of us? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to announcements and communications. I'll start, we just had, thank you so much, have a good night. A soft opening for. We just had a soft opening for the Old City Hall building that Mr. Kendricks has been working on renovating, and it looks great in there. So, big shout out to the Public Works Department and, you know, something that was sitting fallow for a minute that was a liability to the city is now once again an asset with additional space for our staff and our operations, which is just wonderful. So next, we just have to rename it from Old City Hall to something else. Okay, great. Also, Fourth of July celebration, sounds like there was a great turnout, I had a sick child. But thank you so much to Councilmember Ramsey and Councilmember Woods for coming on behalf of the city and also just our hearts go out, my heart, our hearts go out to Texas, I know kind of tainted the Fourth of July weekend. It's really pretty devastating, so, I'm just thinking about them. And then also, oh, did you?
Just a comment about the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
You know, the city is a cosponsor of the plain Fourth of July picnic, providing the meat that is used for cooking. It would be great if the city had its tent down there and had a presence. I mean, there were over a hundred people there.
That's great turnout.
And it would be excellent for the city to be more engaged in that.
Great, noted for next year. Also, I wanted to say thank you so much to our incredible city manager, Mr. Hawthorne, and the staff for putting together this strategic performance report that we get at the beginning of each work session. It's available for the public as well, gets sent out. It's just a really incredible, comprehensive report of all the different projects that are going on in the city, and I just appreciate all of the effort that goes into making this a really thorough and informative piece of communication for the city, so, thank you. Any other announcements or communications from council? Okay, is there a motion to adopt the agenda of the day?
I'm going to vote that we adopt the agenda of the day.
It's your second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We can open with public comment, so if you'd like to come up and say anything, just state your name, your address. There's about three minutes each, and. We have more public here than normal, so I'm looking at y'all. All right.
This would be a good time for any comments that you might have on agenda items that you'd like to hear, have the council hear.
Yeah, and there's also a public comment at the end as well. Okay, so moving on to new business, we have first item on here is the Senior Property Tax Relief Program brought forth by Councilmember Ramsey. Would you like to?
Sure, sure.
What you're proposing.
Yes, Ned, if you could move forward on the screen to the presentation slides, and then we'll come back after those to the proposed draft resolution itself. Yes.
We're going to be aiming for links to each agenda item soon.
Great idea.
There you go. Okay, that's just the cover slide, let's go to the next slide. This discussion on senior tax exemptions, can you shrink that a little bit? Oh, now you've gone to the end of the presentation.
Wow.
Okay, great. This discussion was originally introduced back in April of 2025 at a council work session. It was tabled at that time due to some misinformation that was shared regarding taxes and financing, as well as the complexity of the original senior tax exemption proposal. It's being reintroduced at this time, the city has corrected the financial information that was shared. And just to inform everyone, most of the cities within DeKalb County offer their senior citizens a tax exemption on city taxes. Pine Lake is one of the few exemptions. Next slide, here are some examples. You can see City of Brookhaven, City of Chambly, City of Dunwoody, and I will particularly call out the City of Dunwoody and the City of Stonecrest here because that is the model that I have used for the proposed Pine Lake tax exemption. This senior exemption for age sixty-five with fifteen thousand dollars or less of Georgia net income is the exact equivalent of the DeKalb County H-4 exemption. So, in an effort to cut the work administratively that would need to be done by the city, in this case, the proposed case, someone who applies for an H-4 exemption from the county would automatically qualify for the senior exemption in the City of Pine Lake. But you can see some cities are a little bit less generous than this here. What this one does is, for Dunwoody and Stonecrest, it takes fourteen thousand dollars off the assessed value of the property, and it reduces the millage rate by one mil. So, and I will walk through what that actually means in dollars and cents in one of the later slides. You can see here, Stonecrest offers the same thing. City of Doraville doesn't have an age sixty-five, but they do have an age seventy and older, and those residents receive one hundred percent city tax exemption in the City of Doraville. Next slide. So, this one you may need to make a little bit bigger here, Ned, if you can. Okay, so, what happens here is a fair market value for a property is established by DeKalb County. The assessed value of that is forty percent of the fair market value. This happens to be my taxes up here that you're looking at. So you can see here that my house was assessed at three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. The assessed value, and this is for 2025, the assessed value is a hundred and fifty-three. And down below, you can see, on the bottom line there, you can see county operations, school operations, and city taxes. And what you'll see is that the exemption that I receive, and I don't receive the H-4, I receive the H-9 exemption, which has a higher income level. So, just for a point of order, I would not be eligible for the city tax proposal that I'm proposing. But for the county, the county takes one hundred thousand dollars off the assessed value of the property. So it goes from a hundred and fifty-three to fifty-three thousand dollars that the county taxes me. Excuse me, it's removing fifty-three thousand, they're taxing me on one hundred thousand. The school operations removes one hundred and fifty-three, they remove the entire assessed value for school tax purposes, so the net value, taxable value is zero. The city, what you see there of four thousand dollars exemption value, that's the city's basic homestead exemption, which was presented by the city manager a few weeks ago in our millage rate discussion. It removes four thousand dollars from the assessed value of the house. I don't know how long ago that was put in place, but it's been four thousand dollars for a long, long, long time, and it hasn't changed. So, you know, my taxable assessed value for the city purposes is a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So exemptions, including the basic homestead exemption, are available to all qualified homeowners, and they are based on adjustments to the assessed value of the house. Next slide, Ned. Senior exemptions at the county level can have a huge impact on a homeowner's tax bill. The major reductions are to school taxes and some county operations taxes. There are a few smaller areas of impact, but they are relatively small. Senior homestead exemptions are in addition to the basic homestead exemption that's available to every homeowner, and in combination, they can reduce a homeowner's tax burden, county and city combined, by as much as sixty percent. Hard to see on, on. Well, I guess if you looked at the bottom line closer on that, can you blow that bottom line up, Ned? Okay, that's. Yeah, can't really read it. What it really does, just to give you an example on my taxes, it dropped from a gross tax amount of eight thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars to three thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, a very significant drop. One would think. Next slide, please. So, why is a Pine Lake senior tax exemption necessary? Can you blow up that table on the right-hand side? Even larger if you could? Okay, so what you can see here is, if you look at the real and personal property, or even just look at the, yeah, look at the real and personal property. You can see that from 2020 to 2025, and this is information that was shared two weeks ago in our millage rate discussion, that the value of real estate in Pine Lake has risen by seventy percent. If you look down at taxes levied, which is yeah, third from the bottom, taxes levied, it's gone from five hundred and fifty-three thousand and change to nine hundred and twenty thousand and change over the same timeframe. That's an increase of sixty-seven percent that the city is collecting in taxes. If you look at the exemptions line, you can see that it's gone from nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in 2020 to one million and sixty-nine. So the value of an exemption in 2020 was significantly higher than the value of an exemption in 2025. That's because that exemption is in dollars, not percent, as charged against assessed value. So, the exemptions have actually gone up less than, slightly less than ten percent over that same time period, while the value of property has gone up seventy, and the value of the tax digest has, the tax levied has gone up sixty-seven percent. So, next slide, Ned. That's good. We know from the information that Finance Director Lamott shared with us that in gross numbers, city taxes represent thirty-four percent of a gross tax bill before any exemptions are applied. But in fact, for an elderly resident receiving both the homestead exemption and the income qualified H-4 or H-9 exemptions, city taxes represent approximately seventy-four percent of their tax bill. In the example that I showed you on Slide Five, which was my tax bill, the city tax portion of that, of that, what was it, thirty-one hundred and change, that was my adjusted, exemption-adjusted tax bill, almost two thousand dollars of it is city taxes. Actually, twenty-three forty is the city tax portion. That may not seem like a lot of money to some, but consider the fact that the average social security benefit in the state of Georgia is one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. A lot of seniors aren't able to work more than a few hours per week, if at all, due to age, health, or mobility issues. So, for many people, I can't say how many, consider the fact that social security may be what their, their income is based upon. So if you look at that ninety-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, round it up to two thousand, multiply it by twelve, and you've got twenty-four thousand dollars, and you've got a city tax bill of twenty-three hundred and forty-four. So ten percent of your gross income is going to pay your city tax bill. If you want to talk about a sustainable future for residents, that's not it. Next slide, Ned. So what is being proposed as a senior tax exemption for the City of Pine Lake? I'm proposing a senior exemption, age sixty-five and older, with fifteen thousand dollars or less of Georgia net income, being provided with a fourteen thousand dollar reduction in assessed value, plus a one mil reduction in the city's levy on the assessed value. This is the same qualifications as DeKalb County's H-4 senior exemption, and the tax benefit provided is modeled after the City of Dunwoody and the City of Stonecrest. City council is free to adjust these numbers up and down. You can, you can consider a smaller reduction in assessed value. You can consider half a mil reduction instead of a one mil reduction. What I'm trying to get across here is that there's a need for action. We're losing residents, and that's going to accelerate if we don't do something. Next slide, please. So how would a qualified senior homeowner apply for a senior exemption in the City of Pine Lake? It would be really simple. They would apply for the H-4 senior exemption from DeKalb County, and if they receive it, they would get the Pine Lake exemption. Next slide. So how many City of Pine Lake senior homeowners are currently receiving the H-4 exemption? Back in May, I asked City Manager Hawthorne to look into this, and he tasked Finance Director Lamott with finding out how many senior exemptions were received. And we received all of the exemptions, both H-4, H-9, H-2, and others. As far as H-4 goes, there were forty-two City of Pine Lake homeowners receiving the H-4 exemption. Thank you, Ned. So, what would be the financial implication of enacting a City of Pine Lake senior exemption as described? Let's take an example of a home that has a fair market value of three hundred thousand dollars. The assessed value of the house would be one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Take away the Pine Lake homestead exemption of four thousand dollars off the assessed value, and you have an assessed value of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Multiply that times our millage rate, which would be zero point zero one nine four times one hundred and sixteen thousand, and you get a total of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. That is the rate for that house before the senior tax exemption is applied. Next slide, Ned. Now applying the senior tax exemption. So we start with the hundred and sixteen thousand, which is the county assessed value minus the four thousand dollar reduction in assessed value for the City of Pine Lake, basic homestead exemption. Then take away the fourteen thousand dollar senior reduction in assessed value, and you get one hundred and two thousand dollars in assessed value. Times the adjusted, senior adjusted millage rate, instead of nineteen point four, we use eighteen point four. So we multiply times zero point zero one eight four, and you get one thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-six cents. So that would be the city tax rate for that property after the senior tax exemption is applied. Next slide, Ned. So the cost per qualified homeowner of the proposed senior tax exemption is three hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents for a three hundred thousand dollar market value home, okay? Using our current forty-two qualified homeowners, the total cost to the City of Pine Lake to enact this would be fifteen thousand six ninety-one. So, I guess the question before us is, this is a, this is not an easy process to pass. It requires us to get legislative approval. It requires us to have a referendum. This is a lengthy process, but if we don't start it, it will never happen. And while that clock is ticking, we're losing more residents who can't afford to live here anymore. I'm asking that the city council take action. Can we go back, Ned, to the proposed draft? That would be kind of midway, it's before the presentation. Keep going. Up, that, keep down, no, the other way. I think, you're gonna have to make it larger for me, I can't see where, right? Right there, below the cities. There you go, okay. So this is the proposed draft resolution to establish property tax relief program for the City of Pine Lake based on a qualified income level, whereas the city, and I know Attorney Bosch will wordsmith this as necessary when the time comes, whereas the city acknowledges the financial pressures faced by seniors, senior citizens living on fixed or limited incomes, and whereas rising property taxes have disproportionately impacted low and moderate income seniors, threatening their ability to remain in their homes, and whereas city council is committed to promoting financial stability and equitable tax relief for seniors, be it therefore resolved that the council puts forward as follows eligibility and tax relief. Senior exemption, sixty-five years of age with fifteen thousand or less of Georgia net income, fourteen thousand reduction in assessed value, plus one mil reduction in the city's levy on the assessed value. Qualifications are the same as DeKalb County's H-4. Application process. Eligible residents must apply for and receive the DeKalb County H4 senior exemption. Once it is approved, the DeKalb County Tax Office will automatically apply the city of Pine Lake's senior tax exemption. Program implementation and funding, and I know this is where the discussion will probably come in. Tax relief programs shall be funded through specific funding sources, either municipal budget allocation, state grants. We have found a lot of ways to spend money lately. We're collecting a lot more in taxes from our residents than we have ever collected before. 67% more in the last five years. We have a lot of projects proposed and considered highly by council for approval. In terms of making our city better and more sustainable, what I would argue is that this is an important component of the sustainability of our city. This loss of our senior residents who may not be able to live here anymore because of the cost of taxes will change the nature of our community. So I would ask council to seriously consider this proposal and consider bringing it to an agenda item for a voting session. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it for discussion.
Tom, I just have one informational question. It seems like all of these exemptions are fixed number rather than a percent. And we had talked about that, and I was very surprised that it was a fixed number. Is there some legal reason why that has to be that way, or?
I don't know, Jean. I don't have an answer to that.
I guess you're proposing that we do something similar to another city, but in my opinion, well, I mean, if you're talking about continuity and continuing this on, you're gonna end up in the same spot we're in now with the $4,000. If you say a fixed amount of $14,000, that'll provide $400 in relief for a $300,000 home, but then...
Well, it'll provide $400,000 in relief on a $2,300 tax bill, basically.
Well, yeah, but it's $400 is the bottom line of what, right now, you're saying against someone's annual income. And that might work right now, but five years later, that $400 is gonna be worth $200, and it's gonna go down. I'm just wondering why it's done that way.
Maybe...
Are there any of the exemptions that you saw that are a percent of the...
No, no. Other than, I think it was Doraville, which was 100%.
The 1% off, the one mil off will, I think, kind of offset as like a percentage as well, if we're talking about like a percent as far as a fixed number.
Yeah, that's the only thing that has flexibility in it.
Mr. Bolsh, do you know anything about, is there any thing that says that it has to be a fixed amount?
Having done several of these over the last, however many years it's been, Legislative Council's office does not like doing percentages in these exemptions. And they're the people that you have to go through, they're the gatekeepers for the General Assembly, and have to say grace over whatever bill we bring for this process. As I explained when we talked about this a couple of months ago, this is an ask to your local delegation to bring a bill to the legislature that has to pass both houses by two-thirds majority, and then go to a referendum where it has to pass by a simple majority. So this is not direct legislation that the council can impact immediately. So the gatekeeper at the General Assembly is the Legislative Council's office. I don't know any of them anymore. Everybody I've known that has worked there has gone on to other pursuits. So they're gonna be a completely brand-new group of folks to me if we do this, that we have to get to know and have to understand what their thought processes are, and whether they'll consider something different than has been approved in the past.
Okay. Just curious about that. Then my other question is, you said the way it's laid out right now, we're talking about $15,691 for Pine Lake to implement this, but that's to implement, that's to pay it or to the reduction in revenue going forward in order to implement this.
That's just an example based on...
Right, but somewhere in that area. But, but the other side of this is that it is going to cost us a significant amount of money to implement, actually implement this. That is, have a referendum, have the legal costs associated with it, the study of some kind to help us understand what this effect is going to be, because when we do this, we're doing this permanently. I mean, this is not something that's gonna go away. We're committing the city of Pine Lake to this ad infinitum. It could, I guess, have another referendum and be changed at some point, but it's a big, it would be a big deal and a big expense. Do we have any idea of what the cost will be to get this done?
We do, actually. I, in reviewing your proposal, I reached out both to city attorney Bolsh and got a general idea of what it would cost if we were to do a Carl Vinson Institute study to understand the long-term impacts. But as Councilmember Bordeaux is saying, this is something that, we made a statement, Mr. Ramsey, about we could adjust the numbers. Just to clarify, we could adjust the numbers, the percentage, the millage rate, the $14,000 before it moves forward. But we can't move, we can't do that once it's in process. So if council does want to move forward with something like this, I think it's really important to do the due diligence to understand what the long-term impact financially is going to be. What is it gonna look like? How many people are gonna qualify for it in the next three, five, 10 years? What does that look like? What is our tax digest? There's a lot of information that's gonna be needed, I think. So if we were to do, you know, to go through with our city attorney leading this process and Carl Vinson Institute doing a study, we're probably looking somewhere in the $40,000 to $50,000 range just to get this off of the ground in a budget cycle that the city has not allocated any funds for this year. So my primary, and I'm not voting, obviously, but my primary resistance has to do with the timing more than the sentiment. Because, I mean, I completely agree with the sentiment. I think it makes a lot of sense to try to keep our residents here. And the financial picture that you laid out, I think, is really comprehensive and really well-thought-out, and I really do appreciate that. The question that comes up for me is that we've had 18 months of strategic planning to really try to organize as a council, as an elected body, to get in sync with the city administration, to really understand what are our priorities and how are we moving those forward in a very strategic way for the longevity of the city. Because this is one aspect of financial sustainability, but another aspect is what do we do with the Rockbridge Road corridor? How do we really attract the development that needs to come there that's in line with city values? What is that gonna cost to really, you know, alleviate and grow our tax base? I say we're different from some of the other cities that you've laid out in this. We're not Dunwoody, and we're not Brookhaven. We have a very different tax digest than any of those cities that have a lot more diverse revenue streams than we do. So I think it's really imperative that the council considers with a study to understand what the long-term impacts of this are going to be before we actually move it forward. I have a lot of other thoughts about it, but I want to pass it to other council for questions, thoughts.
I think along that, when you're talking about the budget cycle and not having allotted money for it, the soonest this could be enacted would be if it passes the General Assembly in, you know, March of next year. But I think there's a lot that we can do to have it this prepared and ready for that so that we can strike when the iron is hot. I am concerned about the $50,000 case study. I'm sure it'll take significant time from Mr. Bolsh as well.
And just to clarify, that's just the rough estimate from Carl Vinson plus Mr. Bolsh plus like all the legal lobbying things. That's the kind of running tab of $40-ish to $50,000 probably to get it off the ground.
And it's not something that we can take from SPOLOST 2, I don't think.
No, this would be a general fund. I'll ask Mr. Hawthorne, but this would be a general fund allocation, which is basically pulling from the reserves.
I agree.
Versus a capital project.
I can't imagine there's a lot of grants for something like this, especially now, because we don't have grants to help people anymore federally. So, what can we do to make this not such an immediate upfront burden so that we can have it ready to pass or be presented to the General Assembly? And that's, the upfront cost is the big thing, and then we are in perpetuity having to do $20,000, which next should be $22,000, and then $25,000, and $30,000. I am concerned how to pay for it. And do we have any good leads on where we could get that money or how we could make up for that in the budget?
I would throw in something out there that you've heard me talk about the undervaluing of commercial properties in Pine Lake. And so when I sit here and I see that from 2020 to 2025, the real estate value has risen by 70%, that is not true for the apartments in this city. I was just updating my spreadsheet this weekend, and from, literally, from, for a five-year basis, I don't have the statistics, but the increase in the valuation is minimal, like thousands of dollars in assessed value. I'm also concerned of the double-edged sword of that, that that means then if we find a way to enlist the help of DeKalb County to reassess our commercial properties at a fair market rate, which they are not now. An example was one unit sold for $595,000. It's assessed at $395,000. But the impact of if those are reassessed and the value goes up and the taxes go up, that also will impact rent rates and our low-income affordability. So this is a, there's a lot of different considerations, I think, in this. There's a lot of things that we can't control. We can't tell DeKalb County property tax assessment, say, you need to look at this. We could only request it. And they could say yes, or they could say no. We also, I think strategically, need to, you know, factor in we are looking at how do we diversify, and that's something we've been saying as long as I've lived here. And it's just always constantly to sort of kick down the road, so to speak, and it's Rockbridge Road.
To that question, just to lay this out, why I'm advocating for kind of a zoomed-out strategic approach to how we're considering our long-term finances, and I absolutely think that this should be part of that consideration. When we were looking at the initial financial implications of doing an enterprise zone, for instance, there's going to be some tax relief that would happen to incentivize people to invest in their commercial properties, to raise the commercial values. And that's gonna have a financial impact on the city also. You know, I think one estimate we heard was between $30,000 and $50,000 a year for a set amount of time in order to incentivize development. So those are all things that are part of the picture that I think really needs to be considered because we're functioning in a time, like this council particularly, you've come in, in a time where we are flush with more cash than we've ever been flush with. I would say, you know, leading up to this period, it has been, the experience of working the budget in Pine Lake has been, where do we find $100? You know, where do we find the $500 to pay for this thing? And we're in a period where right now we have $2 million of SPOLOST money that we have access to for capital projects. We have backlog of SPOLOST projects that we're able to get done, and we're able to pay for some of salaries in our infrastructure that we're, you know, our project management through funding like that. But that's gonna go away, and we're gonna spend that pretty quickly at the pace that we're going in the capital improvement plan that Mr. Kendrick has laid out. And we're going to be left with really thinking, now is the time, while we have that cushion, to really be thinking about our strategic position for when we no longer have that cushion, that we can continue to float the overhead that we have as a professionally-run city. And so I think this is one piece of that, but we need a lot more. My personal perspective is we need a lot more information to understand how that weaves into the fabric of a fully sustainable city.
My concern, Mayor, is that it needs to weave into this process. It can't be ignored any longer. The impact on our residents is great and it's real. As someone who has sat on city council for eight years and served two years as mayor, you know how long things take. You've been working on Rockbridge Road development for almost 10 years, and it's barely getting started at this point. You know, this can't wait until that happens. This needs to be a part of the discussion moving forward now. And if it means funding a study out of reserves, I would suggest we fund the study out of reserves and get an answer as to whether this is doable or not.
In regards to the study, did we not approve a study for salaries recently? And isn't it even more than what we're talking about for the Vinson Institute? I thought it was $60,000.
Uh-uh, it was $5. Mr. Hawthorne can speak. $11,000.
$11,000.
And we know by approving that, that that's also gonna have a cost in terms of salaries. We will determine likely that salaries are underfunded. We're investing in a lot of different areas, and yes, we're spending a lot of money. As someone who, it's just started collecting social security and looking at my property tax bills, I'm going, I don't know how long I can keep doing this. And there's a lot of seniors in our community who are struggling. And long-term residents are saying, I don't want to have to move. So something, something has to be done.
Do we need the Carl Vinson study to...
I'd like to turn that to you, Mr. Hawthorne.
So I'm not a policymaker, but I'm your city manager. And as you know, the city charter provides for the city manager participating in discussion. And so to answer the question, but I have a little bit more to say. When this proposal was first raised by Councilmember Ramsey in a different form, I had probably been here for four or five months. And it frightened me to no end. And one of the reasons that it frightened me to no end is the uniqueness of Pine Lake. And I understand the issues and always wanted to give relief to our neighbors. But I learned a long time ago, as all of you did, for any action, for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction, so to speak. And this particular... And this particular proposal, and particularly because of the uniqueness of Pine Lake, one of the things that we're proud of and that governing bodies have passed up on is the opportunity to be something different in terms of size. And I'm not sure what's going on with the mic system.
Thank you.
And so we actually, in our pride, and when I first learned about Pine Lake, we're the smallest of DeKalb County cities. You know, under 800 in population. And so there are some things, while we have all of the responsibilities of any municipality, to be a municipality. There are some things, in my opinion, that we simply, because of our uniqueness, can't compete with the big boys. And I think the mayor made a good point, and even some of the examples of cities that were pointed out. Those are, those are very different examples from Pine Lake. And so when this original proposal, and I haven't changed much from the revised proposal, I thought about the long-term implications. And one of the things that we can't know and we would have to project is 10, 15, 20 years from now, what does this say? I mean, Pine Lake is a relatively older population now. And we see what, you know, using these different exemptions would mean. 15 or 20 years from now, Pine Lake will only be older as its residents. We can't say that it's going to be replenished by people 40 or 50 years of the junior, of current seniors. And so as this grows, property tax has the potential of, talk about sustainability, and sustainability, as you know, I wrote in my strategic performance report, has so many factors. So yes, we have to be concerned about the sustainability of individual neighbors, but we also have to be concerned because it's our responsibility, the whole of Pine Lake. And will Pine Lake, from a financial standpoint alone, be able to sustain itself? This is a deep proposal. And I believe if we move ahead without studying it thoroughly for short and long term, we will have missed the boat of due diligence and potentially to sank this community. We're paying catch-up, folks. If I could give an assessment as your new city manager, we're paying catch-up. And as you know, and has been said already, we're trying to invest in this community to bring it back to a standard that we could all be proud of and for others to be proud of. And I know we love Pine Lake, but sustainability is important. And I will tell you, I believe, and I'm going to speak to you frankly, as your new city manager, giving you some objective assessment from the outside, I think we've gotten away with some things, probably based on comments that the mayor made earlier in any given budget cycle, not looking for projects, but looking for hundreds or small thousands to keep the city afloat. And I have to think there has been some level of luck. And I have to tell you, and I tell you this honestly, the staff of your city, one of my constituents, and one of yours, they're a pretty amazing group. And I've worked with big and small cities. You've got a special breed of people. And I've wondered, why have they stayed? Those that have been here a long time in particular, or even those that have been here two or three or four years, why have they stayed? Because we don't pay very well now. We're going to do a scientific study and we're going to know. You know, I'm talking to the consultant and I'm sharing information. And, you know, from time to time when I talk, I say I have to pick on people. And I'm going to have to pick on some staff tonight. I'm going to use titles and not names. But this is one that has bothered me to no end before I even started. But I want to share with you a comment that as I'm talking with the consultant from Vincent Institute, University of Georgia, and I'm sharing some data. And I mentioned the police chief. I'm not going to use her name. I don't want to get too personal. But this one hurts me, I'm going to tell you. And I was having a conversation with them about a week ago. And I said, you know, I don't know what the results are going to show, but I believe the police chief earns around $59,000 annually. And their immediate comment was, that's about the rate of an entry-level police officer. Now, we've got to fix that, if the study supports it, and I believe it does, and I believe it's going to show it for others. And I've been having a lot of conversations, going to pick on a council member too, Mayor Protem Bordeaux. I've been having a lot of conversations with her that she's initiated. Going back to the budget that you approved, the amended budget, in which I made it clear to you that some things that we're funding, such as the Classification and Compensation Study, $11,000 for the study, but I projected some tens of thousands of dollars to boost salaries, along with some other categories that are a priority of the council, code enforcement, that you have just spent relentless hours, that went to, after 11 o'clock at the last work session, to put a new policy in place because you're serious and you're concerned about investing in this community. And I told you we needed a placeholder of $50,000. I don't even know what that's going to look like. I know the chief, who I'm going to have talk about community enforcement next step, I've also invited, I believe he's still here, Officer Brooks, who I just met for the first time. You're paying him nothing. He's working as a reserve officer. But if you now want us to get serious to implement this chapter, that kind of luck is going to run out. And I believe some luck with some other staff people. So it's a time to invest. And you all are pushing that, not my agenda, these things. And so when I hear at the same time that we need to discount, and I understand that issue, I do understand it. There's a certain incongruency about it. Now, the $15,000 that Councilmember Ramsey's proposal shows is roughly the equivalent, because we're small, small tax base, of a half a mil. And I will tell you, anytime somebody talks about a half a mil, that can raise the ire of the community. And so to offset that, just roughly, it's a little less than a half a mil. So you're talking about significant numbers and that's just for the savings for one year. And I think back to your last public hearing on the property tax mileage. And I'm not trying to say that this was the consistent message of all residents, but we had, you know, a good representation of people here. And I didn't know what they were going to say. But the consistent message that they sent at that last public hearing was, "We understand, we know our mileage is high, and as long as you're not going above the current mileage, which happens to be 19.4, the group that was here was okay." So this $15,000 reduction alone, which I certainly will be advocating that we've got to make up for it, would be just under a half a mil. So that would have been a very unhappy representative group. But going back to the discussion that I told you that I've been having with Mayor Protem Bordeaux, because she's been worried. What I presented to you for the amended budget was, most of the things that were on the list are recurring. And so at this point, we've not identified the recurring sources of revenue to make up for the things that we put on the list just now. So short-term, this is a major impact. Approaching a half a mil, that's going to grow. While we still have some holes to fill, even though we've got some capital project funds that, you know, it's going to only last so long. So I just want you to bear in mind that this is not a simple issue to take lightly, lightly. This is about the long-term, particularly sustainability of the Pine Lake community, as unique as it is, with significant impacts even today. So I'm going to stop and to answer your question again. If we didn't do a study, I think it would be a serious dereliction of duty.
Thank you, City Manager Hawthorne. I appreciate your comments and your thorough explanation from your perspective. You have a long-intended career, working in a lot of different districts and a lot of different states. I value your perspective. I want to just piggyback one thought on that, when you're talking about the half a mil adjustment. One thing for council to consider in this, you know, the revenue, the need for the revenue doesn't disappear. It just gets reallocated. So when we're thinking about the financial, the long-term financial health of the city, we haven't removed that expense, right? So that making up that additional money then gets reallocated to the other parts of our tax base. I think, you know, Councilmember Goldberg identified one strategic initiative that we could take with getting the county to reassess our, our commercial properties, to which we've not been successful yet, but I have hope. I want to say that we are in a place where this past year, in terms of the city, we're coming up on a year, this time last year when we lost our first city manager, our previous city manager, there was a period of a lot of uncertainty. We had no Public Works Department leading up to that. Then Mr. Kendrick came in in the begin, in the middle of the year, thank goodness. We've, we've been in a place of massive amount of transition in the city. And I think we're, finally, I feel a lot of gratitude that we're in a place where the ship has righted and we have stabilized a good amount, and we've invested a lot into the projects that we currently have. My proposal would be, just like you're saying, Councilmember Ramsey, I think that this absolutely needs to be a consideration in the larger fabric of the conversation of financial sustainability and health of the city. We've put a lot of our efforts in the last 18 months on capital projects, on wetlands, on, you know, shoring up the foundation, code enforcement, all of the things that we've dedicated a lot of time. My proposal is that the council now turns our attention, I think this is raising a really valuable point, that we now turn our attention to our next strategic planning session and really have that session be looking at the long-term initiatives that we're going to take, the short and long-term initiatives that will move the needle toward financial sustainability. And that means weaving in all of these, all of these things. It means the proposal, maybe we, council, as we go into the budget cycle for next year, decides to fund a study to understand the fiscal implications of this. I think it's looking at what are the next steps on Rockbridge. I think it's looking at how do we really right-size our tax digest with the county? What are the actual, as a project, what do we need to do? What do we need to do to implement the Enterprise and Rural Opportunity Zone projects, which I think just got renewed, but we're up on the chopping block for a second in the big, beautiful bill? That's what I am putting forth. I think that it's a really valuable presentation that you've presented and I think it's a really important topic. I just think we need more information.
Thank you, Mayor. I would still like to suggest that we move forward with a study. Because I think any discussion that we have down the road in a strategic planning session would benefit from the information. I mean, we can't have that discussion strategically without the details. So my suggestion as, would be that we find a way to fund the study to get the details. We've seemed to have found a way to move other things forward that were further out in the five-year plan, moving them forward. I'd suggest we need to find a way to do this. In terms of the impact on the mileage rate, it's slightly under .3 mil impact, not half a mil impact.
I told you it was a rough, a rough number.
Okay.
So maybe somewhere in between, but even a third of a mil is significant.
Counsel.
I would really like to see a study, if we're going to, if we're going to even consider this. Look at doing a study because right now we're looking at currently, what, 42 people qualifying? And then we end up with 60 people qualifying or, you know, so the numbers are going to be changing. So we need to look at.
I, I think we don't know how the numbers are going to change.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I agree.
I'm just guessing at, at a number, but if we do something to help, that will increase people staying longer, which will also affect these numbers too. So I think a study needs to see, because once we commit to it, it, it's going to be a long-term effect on the city and how we're going to be able to finance it. Because right now we're looking at, we're hoping that they'll come out and reassess apartments, but we, like you said, Jeff, we can't make them come out and do that. And so we need to look at, if that does not happen, how are we going to, you know, without impacting the people that are not seniors, having to increase the taxes just to even balance out the budget? I was here when we were looking at, we had such a problem. We were making like $45 as councilmembers and we were about to donate that money just to make the budget set up for the meeting, you know, for the city.
$36 as councilmembers.
Yeah, we changed, yeah. You know, to turn that into, just to balance. So, you know, right now we're having like a lot of money coming in, but we don't want to get back to that, where we're going to say, well, we can't even pay council because we need to donate that money to make the budget balance out. So, so I think we need to really look at how this is going to implement us in the future.
Other thoughts?
We, we live in the world of data right now, so I would love to see us get more information to make a strategic decision. And to me, that's a study and I don't know what that would cost. I don't know how we find out what that estimate would be. But at the same hand, I think we also need to. But at the same hand, I think we also need to figure out a way to give hope to those who are struggling to afford to live here. And I don't know what that would look like, but I think that is vital that there are people who are like, "I'm not sure if I could be here next year."
Councilmember Torrent and I were discussing this recently about doing an info, the session that you gave when we had a public hearing and you broke down the tax bill. You did it again today. Just knowing the public wasn't even aware of which exemptions they would qualify for or not qualify for. I feel like doing an informational session and/or helping people fill out their applications for exemptions, that's something that we could do in the interim to really help people understand what they qualify for now as we're gathering more information.
Yeah, they may not be even getting some of the exemptions that they're qualified for that may even help them right now.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. I, I got a call from a resident who is known in this city for giving presentations on how to get your, how to challenge your assessment. He didn't know what he was eligible for.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think that's the lowest hanging fruit. What are the programs that already exist and can we educate people?
Right, but I, I don't want to delay gathering the information necessary to move something forward with this. I mean, if it goes up and down on a vote that we're not gonna spend the money on getting a study done, so be it. But I'd really like to see it come to the table that we find a way to fund a study before our next strategic planning session.
So do we really have any idea what a funding, like what, what that would cost, a study that we're talking about?
As you know, we are working with the University of Georgia Vincent Institute of Government on the classification study. So I took advantage to, um, to talk with my current, um, partners, and they recommended that particular specialty area. So I've already started that process as far as, as far as outreach and, you know, despite what I said, what I was trying to say is the potential implications, I think we should study of the issue. And so I do, I do have a contact. I told them that we had it scheduled for work session and that I would be back in touch after hearing from the, from the city council. So I don't, I don't have any idea right now. And I will tell you that they told me that their, their schedule is, um, is pretty packed. But he also gave me a sense that, um, that he would work with us to, um, to maybe expedite this, um, to the extent that they, that they can. So I, I can certainly give you an update, um, after now going back and, and following up and asking for a proposal.
Any other thoughts or comments on this topic?
I think it's a good start. I think it's a great start. I think it's a necessary thing that we need to push forward, and this is, I know we talk about the glacial pace of government, um, but it's thanks to pushes like this, Tom, that things get going at all. Um, and I think our next step should be finding out specific information.
Well, I, I don't necessarily agree with that, but, um, I guess what I would like to find is a more cost-effective solution to this problem. If we're gonna spend forty or fifty thousand dollars to get seniors four hundred dollars a year, that does not seem like a cost-effective way to do this. So is there any way that we could include in that study other possibilities, other ways that we might help our seniors be able to stay in the city without having to go through this very expensive and long-term process that also becomes a permanent fixture? I, I just like to see if there isn't a different way to do it than that.
I guess an immediate reaction, which I think we, we could certainly, um, factor into, you know, a request that we ask of the Vincent Institute. It occurs to me, and I had thought about this prior to the meeting, you know, one of the, um, biggest stakeholder groups on both a local, state, and federal level are seniors. And, you know, for good reason.
We vote.
They vote. And, and so politicians pay attention. And I, I know Councilmember Ramsey has, has done a lot of study on the exemptions and did a good job at kind of, uh, at maybe the second public hearing, uh, laying out some of the programs that are, that are out there. And I, I will also tell you that, um, while he has given examples at the county level directly pertaining to, uh, the property tax, uh, the state also grants exemptions. The state used to levy a property tax as well. But nonetheless, there are some exemptions that are available. And somebody mentioned of the big beautiful bill. And one of the things that I also studied, purportedly, the big beautiful bill provides some pretty generous, um, tax deductions for the same, for the same group. And, and so maybe as a part of this, and I can certainly draft something, is a more totality view of other exemptions related to, 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 to property tax and any other, you know, uh, discounts available to seniors that may be available as recently as, you know, last weekend when it was, when it was passed.
Is it possible for the city, if the tax structure was left the way that it stands right now, is it possible for the city, and this is perhaps a question for the city attorney, can the city issue a rebate to a specific group of qualified homeowners?
Off the top of my head, Councilman, I don't know the answer to that.
I got him.
Yeah, I, I'll own it, absolutely. It's the first time I've said I don't know in a council meeting probably in twenty years. I honestly do not know the answer to that. I don't, I wouldn't think so based on what I know of the inherent powers of local government, but that doesn't mean that there's not an exception I'm not aware of, so I'd need to look into that.
Yeah, the question would be, could we be, could we legally do, without impacting the tax collection process, um, could we do a rebate of a portion of the city tax revenue collected to qualified residents?
Great question.
Yeah, I, I, my sense is that the gratuitous clause of the state constitution would prevent that from happening at the local level. The state's got other powers and other issue, other ways that they can go about doing rebates because of over-collected taxes for state purposes. So they're, they're in a different category from the rest of us in, in government. Um, but the gratuitous clause of the state constitution says that local governments can't give away money that is not in exchange for services or goods. So giving a rebate where all we're doing is saying we've over-collected from this specific group of people likely would fly in the face of that prohibition. But I would really appreciate you not making me answer that any further tonight, and let me look at it.
I'll let you check it out. Thank you.
One other question along those lines while you're researching. Right now we've got the four thousand dollar standing deduction. One of the questions I had during your presentation is, how did we arrive at that? What was the process by which we wrote, eru- arrived, arrived?
It actually, it must have happened before any of you guys were on council.
Yeah, I, we didn't do it. And what's the process to change that if we wanted to adjust that number?
The, the adjustment of that number would follow the same process that you're talking about for any other homestead exemption change.
Okay.
Um, there, there is only one process.
Okay.
And it involves the Puzzle Palace at the Gold Dome.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think we've had a great discussion. Thank you all for your thoughtful questions, your wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Objections, concerns, all the things that have been raised. I think that is fruitful. So I want to move on to item number two here, which is our street resurfacing update from our LMIG, our Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. Mr. Kendrick.
Oh, boy.
You're smiling. What?
Asshole.
No.
This is our asphalt?
That doesn't seem, seems like a fire hazard.
Oh, this. Oh, my lord. Have mercy.
Good morning. I mean, good afternoon.
Evening.
All right, so, street resurfacing update for the Local Maintenance Improvement Grant. As previously informed, we've had a, a bid that was received on July the third. Uh, I put this in the strategic, uh, report. The acting city clerk and myself conducted that bid opening. We had four bidders. The, uh, Construction Fifty-seven came in at one million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. They are minority vendor. Uh, they did, we did issue one addendum for this project. Uh, they did respond to that, and they have done previous city work. Uh, Shepco Paving, Inc. came in at one million, three thousand, one hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. They're not a minority vendor. They did respond to addendum number one, and they have not done any previous city work. A N, A N S Paving came in at one million, ninety-six thousand, one hundred dollars. They're not a minority vendor. Uh, they did respond to addendum one and no previous city work. And the apparent low bidder was Triple R Paving, who came in at nine hundred, eighteen thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. They are a minority vendor. They did respond to addendum one, and there was no previous city work. After doing a partial evaluation of all the bids, and my recommendation is going to be, uh, and this is based on that I found, uh, two of, I mean, let me correct that. All of the bidders were non-responsive, uh, to a certain degree, some more than others. So my recommendation is going to be to the guys, uh, would be to, uh, reject all of bids and that we will bring back to you, or after discussion with the city manager, whether we're going to rebid or find some other type of way to accomplish resurfacing. I do have a couple of questions that, uh, during my evaluation, that I wanted to sit down and go through with the city attorney to make sure I'm, I'm correcting what I'm doing here, but I think, uh, as a experienced lens on this is that, uh, I'm doing the correct thing by asking you guys to reject all these bids.
Ken, maybe I just didn't hear totally what you're asking us to reject all of them because they're non, non responsiveness? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm not exactly clear why you're recommending that.
Well, there were certain stipulations, uh, in the, uh, I can, I'll share this with you. One of the ways to kind of check against if you're getting fair prices is on a road project, the length of the road. I did go out and measure roads. And if somebody told me a certain road was, you know, four thousand feet, but I measured it at, you know, three thousand, then they're asking to be paid a thousand, four thousand feet more of a job. So I had a verification in the bid that the bidders were to respond to by giving me what they measured, the roads. And in certain cases, some of them didn't, didn't even respond to that. So that's their omission. You know, if they didn't respond back.
Right.
If I would have had someone else who I thought responded responsibly on all issues, then I could have made a recommendation. But I had some other issues with somebody who did, but I just thought that they, uh, they were trying to get, uh, money for not doing any work.
Thank you for revealing your little secrets.
Ken, um, Mr. Kendrick, can you share what you had the, this is the bids were for the thirteen streets that do not have the center line sewer damage, um, which we are hoping DeKalb will at some point come to take care of? What, do you know what streets those are that would not be included in the paving project because of the, the center line work that needs to be done?
Uh, I did have that list. I just, I think, like Ivy, I believe. And, uh, Pine, those, you know, just have a inordinate amount of center line, you, where, or Park Drive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Park's a big one.
Yeah, that's the big one right there because, you know, as I continually say, you know, if we were to go and pave that road and then that sewer line collapsed, the cab is gonna come right back and cut that road right open. And, you know, why did we pave it to begin with when we already knew there was some underlying damage there?
That makes sense.
Which, which is what DeKalb did the last time the roads were paved.
Yeah, so it's almost like fifty percent of the roads have that type of damage. And, you know, so we would have, we would have gotten somewhere with some of the roads being repaired and, and, but we still had to wait on them for others.
And so were you not getting response from the county in regards to their responding to our need for that work to be done, that to repair their work?
We, we, we've reached out. Uh, we had made, we've made contacts. The chief has contacts. I have contacts in both watershed and in, uh, roads and drainage. And the responses that we're getting, and, and, and I believe them, and I know she also believes them, is that they've created work orders, but they've got such a backlog. On Hemlock and Magnolia, when they had those water leaks, and it took months for them to send someone out because they had, uh, they weren't, they were such a backlog for the internal crews that were repairing, you know, water leaks, that they had a, you know, contractor who were assigned to do those types of repairs. And they finally, you know, got around, well, they didn't bring them on until April. You know, that's when their, that, that particular contractor got funded to do, uh, leak repairs.
So I'm, I'm just curious if there's also a way to engage with our county commissioner to help apply some other oomph to the request?
You and I had a conversation on our field walk of you, you have an upcoming meeting or had a meeting with
Commissioner Johnson.
And I indicated that I would hand you the same list that, uh, Mayor Protam Bordeaux took to her meeting, uh, with the mayors and, um, Ms. Lorraine Johnson. And, uh, so it's, it's the same issue. We're not only raising it at the staff level, but we've already raised it at the highest level of the cab, and it's, and it's somewhere, you know, making its way through the system.
Okay, I, I would love to get that list so I could, because I did have a meeting, um, with Commissioner Johnson recently and.
Yeah, I have one coming up too, so I can also. Yeah, I have one coming up too, so I can also...
I'll make sure we get...
Mr. Kendrick, coming back to this particular bid, how would you change this bid going out again to assure you get what you're looking for?
I, I mean, I thought I had a pretty com- comprehensive, you know, and it was easy, um, to understand, but they just omitted some things, and, um, from my experiences, there's just certain percentages of things that you put in certain bid items. And the one, you know, that I want, really was hoping for as I got to analyze it, they exceeded that percentage, which led me to believe that they were, you know, that was just lost money that shouldn't be in that, that item. If it would've been placed in another item, and it would've lined up with the, uh, actual measurements of the roads, then that would've been, you know...
So, none of them got that right?
Some of them got it right, but they got other things wrong.
Okay, I, I guess I'm wondering, I'm wondering, you know, you got four responses to the last one. Do you think these people will bid again, or do you think you're gonna get four different ones?
I'll probably get, I'll probably get ten next time.
Why?
Because the word will be out, and they'll, and, and actually probably working our advantage, to our advantage, that might sharpen the pencil, because they'll know, you know, by me standing here saying, you know, they're, you know, they have to really look at the item that they're trying to bid, and knowing that, you know, I'm gonna look, take a close, sharp look at, uh, you know, what the percentages are.
You think you'd get a better price if you gave them the length of every street you want paved?
Well, that's up to them, you know, I, as a backup to check, to verify, from our standpoint, I do our due diligence.
Okay.
And then...
You leave it to them to give you the measurement of what's needed?
They, they do this every day, all day. They should be able to take a, you know, we had about six or seven people come through here with wheels hanging out of their truck doors, driving down the roads, trying to measure. You know, um, I did it two ways. I, I went on GIS and measured, and verified against walking a wheel for myself, so...
Okay. How long do you think it'll take?
For...
Before you're in front of us again with another set of bids after a bid opening?
It depends on the discussion I have with the city attorney. Uh, it could be sixty days. And that's because of the, the value of the contract. You know, anything over a hundred thousand dollars has to be, you know, publicly bid. And, uh, so, I'll talk with him about a few things.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate you doing your due diligence, and I appreciate that you got a lot of steps in, um, to actually go out and measure. I think that's very commendable, um, and I like that you have that as a check and balance. It's a way, for me, I think, when I think about that and hear that, it's a way that I gauge their integrity. And so, I, I appreciate you really managing our money.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendrick, um, how long do we have before the L-MIG needs to be, uh, not appropriated, uh, obligated?
It depends on which years you're referring to.
Uh, the twenty-twenty-five that we'd be using.
We haven't gotten that allocation in twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, allocation was the wrong word, I'm sorry. Obligation, like, when we obligate the funds, what do we have, what timeline do we have before that is no longer eligible for us to take advantage of?
Let, let me back up and ask, uh, we've had L-MIG funds, you're allowed to, um, reserve those funds until you, because we only get a small amount. We've been getting in past years, like, twelve thousand. Last year, I think, we, the, the, what we had was like a little over fourteen thousand. So, what you're allowed to do is reserve those funds until you have a big enough pot of money to be able to actually, you know, if, if you have a project of a certain dollar value. So, over the past three cycles, we reserved those funds that we, um, put with some SPOSS funds to complete Oak Road. So, now we've have twenty-four, and then what will become our twenty-five allocation that we can have going forward for new projects. So, these funds were specifically, uh, half was coming out of SPOSS Two, and the other were some dedicated to the, uh, two million dollar, um, fund. We had split them up, but it, you know, we wanted to, we, we still have that ability of, the bids would've came back, we could've, you know, went and did six streets and used just simply SPOSS funds for this year, and waited till next year and do two million, or just pay for them out of separate funds if we chose to do all at the same time.
Cool, so we're not, um, there's no penalty for us putting off and rebidding?
No, just as long as we, if we accept the funds, uh, uh, from DOT, we just have to, you know, make an administrative note and tell them where we're and when we're gonna spend the funds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. I guess you could stay where you're at, 'cause you're up again on this, uh, beach house renovation, the project scope, and I know that's in the strategic performance report. Thank you for those photos and that thorough explanation of your findings. Thank you.
You got the before pictures in the strategic report, and here's the, uh...
Thank you.
And this is based on, so, we've got beach house renovations. Uh, the main, uh, room is thirty-six by twenty-five, fourteen by sixteen kitchen, uh, two bathrooms, thirteen by eight floor. And then we also have the outside porch. The scope of work we're considering, of course, we want to level and upgrade the main floor. Well, let, let me back up and say, uh, as I was looking at this, a lot of things were taken into consideration. Staff input, Chief Missy, uh, Ms. Robinson, uh, the other, uh, when the city manager, uh, toured the, the building a month ago, he had input into it. Plane, uh, Ms. Eva, uh, Mr. Burgundy had some input into it also. Can't remember the lady's name who does karate. She, she had some input, the lady, uh, who does the yoga classes had input. Various other people, as I'm standing down there, you know, had input, visitors, uh, stopping, asking, uh, was the, you know, what's the rental policy and those types of things. So, we took all of that into account, and, you know, the obvious is what you pretty much see here that needs to be changed. Upgrade to the bathroom, uh, the entire floor needs to be leveled, uh, interior paint, uh, in order to maintain, uh, the outside deck, and it, it needs to be stained. Kitchen, the kitchen needs to be in, uh, and this is feedback from our facility manager, Ms. Robinson, uh, based on the input that she gets from people, uh, for events. You know, it's not a true warming kitchen, so that needs to be taken into consideration. You don't have much room. It, it is really not functional. You got a four compartment sink, which is traditional for a normal cooking kitchen, uh, which you don't have anything to cook there. Yeah, you know, so, that's a waste of space there. You don't have, uh, an ice maker. Uh, people have to bag, you know, if you're having a nice sized party, they're bringing in ten, fifteen bags of ice, and that's even for events that the city puts on, and those types of things. We have, typically have coolers of, of ice there. The cabinetry is, you know, some less to be desired. Uh, we do have a rodent and, and insect, uh, problem, of which, you know, that would help by removing the cabinets and putting in, you know, uh, barriers, um, to keep all that out. What you have in your hand there is, is indicative of some of the electrical issues that I've not only just found there, but in other buildings. Uh, so, that's kinda lends you toward while we doing electrical evaluation. Some of the things that, that you see down there should not, you know, where we have, uh, where we have, uh, cords hanging from the ceilings for, you know, the, the lighting, that should not be there, so we need to have upgrades there. We get complaints about the trash cans and trash corral. That's just minor type things. But what you see here is by, uh, truly what, you know, we could do, uh, tra- truly be transformative, change the, uh, into a true event center, that where we could probably generate more revenue, uh, be more of amenity for all of, uh, you know, citizens, visitors, maybe become a destination. And also, lend itself toward the longevity of the facility itself. Not only, you know, cosmetically, but functionally as well. So, this'd be one true investment in infrastructure here. We have done some outdoor lighting, I mean, excuse me, outdoor, um, upgrades for the, for the infrastructure. Uh, so we wanna continue that, and also, this is gonna be, you know, one of the pieces of our green space, uh, recreation plan. You know, considering playground, the beach, the, uh, the building itself and the picnic area, and, you know, right on there. So, all of this ties in, uh, you know, neatly and functionally. Uh, we'll move, we do have a flooding issue in there that we can eliminate. Over the last couple of weeks, the heavy rains that we've gotten, I, I know at least three times I've gone down there, gotten calls that the, uh, larger bathroom has had, you know, two, two to three inches of standing water in there. And it is coming in through the, that side door. It's not leaking through the building. The, uh, the storage shed, uh, was, we're using it as, you know, food storage also, because you have, um, refrigerators and such, and, and some of the, the users are putting, um, food items out there, which is contributing to the rat, you know, the insect and, uh, issue, you know. We need to do that, and also the, uh, we get water in that also, so. Lot of those things are, um, considered in, in this proposal, um, to upgrade this, uh, this facility.
I'm sorry to interrupt before you, uh, sorry, I'm over here. We did get someone write into the chat asking you to speak up.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just have to get really close.
Yes. I've been doing, I wanted to do that if I'd like to laugh, I don't know. You got your Lou Rolls voice coming.
A question, um, it seems like that grease trap is a really, always been a real problem. If, if we make, can, can we get rid of that thing? Can we not have a grease trap at all? It, a warming kitchen does not require one, right?
No, what, but we want to make sure that, um, we don't want to damage any of that, but, because that's in here too. We need to, you know, televise and flush the sewer lines and the water lines down there. Uh, if we eliminate the four, um, basin sink, we'll go to a two basin sink, but you still have, you know, fat soils and greases on those, you know, as you clean it. So, what I'm gonna recommend is an inline, maybe what they call like a twenty-pound, uh, grease trap that's easier to clean and service, and abandon that in-floor, uh, grease trap that we, you know, also, you know, continually have to pay for those types of inspections and those types of things. Some of these things are gonna kinda eliminate some of the overall unnecessary maintenance headaches that we'll be facing, um, you know, with this property.
I have a question. So, in the proposal, you know, there's the, like, baseline things that you outlined in the strategic performance report, like, the plumbing, you know, the grease trap, the sink, the rot, the things that just bring it up to, like, a manageable and habitable space. And then there's the other, um, the, like, Cadillac version, the bells and whistles of all the things we could do. Do you imagine these being phased, where we bring it up to snuff, and then go through the ma- the green space master planning, so that we have a comprehensive picture of all the places where we might want to spend money, and then council can evaluate if a full bells and whistles renovation is where they wanna go, or if that money gets allocated elsewhere, based on what comes out of that?
I, I think, like, right now, we're kinda still stuck in this, you know, where the price is gonna go type of thing, and, I, I mean, you know, Missy came up with, you know, the finishes type thing. I don't think we could need to have to go that far, but there's other, uh, options that look just as good, that are, uh, not so pricey, but they, they will look the, the same, and, uh, and I think, you know, we can kinda look at those, and, uh, but I don't think that really has to do so much, uh, as the green space recreation plan looks at usage and, and those types of things, setting policy for how it's used, who, who uses it, who's responsible, and those types of things, because w- we are facing those issues. And I think the building itself needs to look a certain way, um, regardless of how we choose to use it. And, and I think we have that opportunity now, uh, to get that done.
And how much do we still owe on the bond for the original renovation? Do you know? Is it seventy-something? That's seventy a year.
That's seventy-seven a year.
Seventy-seven a year.
I don't know.
I think we have two or three more years left on it. Okay.
But that bond was not just for the renovation of the, of the beach house, it was...
You're talking about when you spent, I think it was a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and seventy, on the, like, the structural components?
There was a renovation of that and the clubhouse and some other city infrastructure that were part of it.
The only file I saw was, it was something like the trust work was, was done. There wasn't really any cosmetic type things done. It was more the, the, the shore up, the, the structure type, yeah. The roof type of issue.
It was when the, um, that back porch was put on, and there was a, a number of other things. But I think that's like about ten years, twelve years ago, at least.
Yeah.
And the funding for this would be SPOSS Two? Is that where most of the...
I, I'm, and I'm thinking that, I was talking to, we, we've got, uh, and I need to talk to, to the city manager about it. I think this can go under the recreation, you know, I really do.
My...
First class, yeah.
I mean, I'm curious council's thoughts, but it's kinda like we were talking about with the, the, the first agenda item. Like, we've got this cushion right now, and we've got a lot of priorities that are some new, some ones that have been stated over and over again, but I'm just curious with, you know, I know the dam renovation, which is the next line item, on here, the findings of that, what we need to do with the wetlands. Like, we're still trying to understand what all, that needs to happen, and then the we're that was in the strategic report. I'm, I'm just, I feel like there's almost like a recalibration that might be needed to really understand the priorities of that, of SPOSS funding, 'cause I can just imagine that getting eaten up real fast before we actually get to some of those, like, very high-level ones, like the dam and the wetlands.
So, so my concern is that when we start getting into the dam and wetlands, it's gonna take more money than we're anticipating.
Same.
And that we, I wanna make sure we have enough money there to do that, 'cause that, in my mind, that's the priority. But I also wanna balance that if, if we're not getting any income and revenue from not really having a rentable facility, is that another way to bring in an investment, to bring in revenue that would help? Again, we're talking about finding other ways to get money into the city.
And what are the things that we need to do?
So, there's a lot of...
To get it habitable.
Thinking about all of that, I think.
Yeah. Or to get it rentable. Like, what are the tiers of what do we do now just to get it to, like, the baseline rentability versus what could, what could we then assess with the other information coming in around wetlands and dam and green space? and green space before committing to a full renovation?
So you, you want me to look at kind of a phase one and a phase two of this and?
Like what's the absolutely, like this has to happen to make it, to protect the asset that we have versus?
Honestly, from, you know, just from hearing everything, if we, we get into it, we might as well go ahead and get into it.
Yeah.
You know? Because, I mean, it's, it's going to cost just as much to refurbish the cabinet as it would be to take them out and replace the cabinets. We do need to, we need to abandon the grease trap so we, you know, here. We, we functionally, we need, you know, for events, we need an ice maker, which half that sink is taking up space for the ice maker. You know, you need a second microwave there where the electricity or the electrical won't support a second one because the first one can't even go where it's supposed to go because it has to be on a different circuit to run. Because if the oven is on, you know, it'll shut the whole building down, you know, type of thing. Then you've got issues where, you know, the.
Yeah.
When you're trying to watch a film, you, you can't, uh, depending on the type, time of day and it's like summer trying to do, where you get the lighting, the west sun's coming in and you can't do that. So like if, if we're going to do it, we might as well go ahead and do it and, and, and be, get it done now. Versus if we do, let's say the floor, you still got, you know, the weight on the kitchen. And if somebody's having an event, they might say, oh yeah, nice floor. But when they, you know, the kitchen's still got the same issues or vice versa.
Right.
You do the, you know, it's just, you know, some, you know, visually it doesn't look pleasing.
Right.
And a lot of these things, but there are some, some of the structural type of things that need to happen also to.
So it goes back to, you know, we were just looking at the, the street resurfacing project, for instance. Those bids were between nine hundred and thir, and one point three million. Half of that or roughly, I think we have about four hundred something in splosh one for street resurfacing, is that right?
Two.
Two hun, splosh two, yeah, 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 okay. So what is that, eight hundred thousand of that potentially would come from splosh, from the two million dollar fund? So that leaves us, you know, twelve hundred or one point two for.
I think the way I, where I looked at it because of the length of the street, I think that it was like five hundred and some thousand that came out of the two million. And it was three hundred and seventeen thousand that came out of splosh.
So then one point five million roughly left in the two million dollar fund. And we don't have the information yet about what it's going to take to do the wetlands and the dam stuff. My, my thinking, I don't know where council sits with this, but I think it would be really good before we make any movement toward this to have cost information on the wetlands and the dam. Cause that's also a really huge piece of infrastructure. And then decide kind of where we need to put.
How long until we get cost information on the wetlands and the dam?
I got a meeting Friday morning to kind of talk about that because we've gotten some, we've gotten some information back from the corps. So we, we kind of narrowing where we're headed with that.
Okay, so then probably in the next few months we'll have pricing, you think? Or preliminary, I don't?
I think we, we could probably, look, look, I, I'll say right now, what's this, July? Say right at the September meeting, I could definitely say we probably have something tentatively draft type of which way we're going to go with that.
Okay, I think it would be important to have a big picture information of what we're doing with that two million before we encumber, you know, eighty thousand of it.
I think we've encumbered a lot of it already in the work that's going on. The only concern that I have is, we're talking about the facility that our residents actually use. And the one facility that could actually bring revenue to the city. I hesitate to put this off for six months while we wait again.
I would say it may bring more revenue, that's a, that's an unknown. We don't know what that actually equals to. And second.
We have some past history we could go back to and a renovated facility would probably do even better.
And then the second piece is, that's one place that the residents currently use. But I think there's an argument that the residents also very much use the wa, the lake and the wetlands. And from the public feedback that we get constantly, that's a huge issue to the residents. So I, I would just hesitate to encumber money doing one project and find out that we don't have enough to actually do one of the huge projects that this council has been very much aligned on moving forward.
I would definitely agree with that. I, I, I think we have to deal with the lake and the wetlands and, and that issue. And the beach house, well, in, in my estimation, we have expanded what people are able to use. They've been able to use this, this, this facility for meetings for, in a way that they've not been able to use it before. I think that that's really important. We, we've already committed and putting, and putting together a new recreational facility for them in the pickleball and tennis courts. I, I, I think, I think our natural resources and, and that, that, that whole project, in my opinion, is top priority. And, and then whatever, whatever's left over, I think we can, we can go with the buildings. But I'll tell you that you're not going to make a lot of money on this. I, I mean, I spent a lot of time when we had a good rental going on, putting together numbers. It's not a huge moneymaker. Yes, it'll be better if it's a nicer facility, but this is not going to make up for any revenue shortfall that we have. It's, it's, it would be better than it not having, than us not having that rental income. But it's, it's expensive to keep, to, to keep that running and make it happen. So we, we don't make a whole lot of money on that. So I wouldn't depend on that for revenue.
It'd be nice if it paid for itself.
Yeah, it would.
It might pay for, yeah. But that's, that's about it and, you know, and, well, anyway. I, I mean, I, I, I just think the wetlands, I mean, that whole project has got to get done. And we don't know how much it's going to be. And I think, I think it's really important that we do know how much it's going to be.
And the streets, I mean, that's another one that is just, we don't know yet how much it's going to be. It's going back out to bid, it's going to be another sixty days. I think once we have a bigger pic, a full picture of what are the things, then we can figure out what the priority is for the money.
So I have two, one question and one comment. In your estimation, as our expert on our public spaces and repairs and everything, what do you think are the priorities of all the variety of projects that we've been throwing around and discussing? And you've brought us information about, what do you think the priorities are?
As I said before, we, we've got several number one priorities. And they're, you know, and they're different. You know, we've got building priorities, we've got, you know, infrastructure priorities, we've got, you know, just recreation priorities, we, you know. So all of them are equally important. I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I, some people, you know, don't use the beach house and they might say the wetlands is the most important priority. But those folks that use the beach house or the clubhouse, they would say that that was their number one priority. Just like, you know, we have other citizens who think ADA compliance is the number one priority. So, you know, that's my answer to the question.
Okay.
It's council setting the priorities.
And council sets the priorities and I just.
So I just wanted your professional opinion, given since you, you have that helicopter view of all the projects. My, my other more of a comment is, I, I love that we're focusing a lot on projects, but when I hear from residents, one of the comments that I hear pretty standard is we're not just doing the day-to-day stuff. We're doing the big stuff. And so when I walked around the lake and I could maybe every thirty yards, find a little spot where I could actually see the lake from the trail because it's so overgrown. I think, I'd like to see us also have a little better balance of the day-to-day maintenance and, and compare, and I don't think we are getting to a lot of that right now. When was the last time the entrance, the little area that's flowers up by the top of clubhouse and rock bridge has been mowed? Do you have any idea?
What, what, which area you're talking about?
In front of the, the little commercial building that's for sale right now, there's a little stretch of sidewalk that got put in and there's a bunch of grass and, and plants growing.
The maintenance of rock bridges for DeKalb County, not, not the city.
Okay, we've, we've always done that as far as I knew.
The grass strip between the sidewalk and the, the curb?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not visualizing where you, where you're saying that, where is it at?
You're saying at clubhouse and rock bridge?
Along, on rock bridge?
Clubhouse and rock bridge.
Is it on rock bridge? The rock bridge parallel sidewalk?
Yeah, so it's, you know where the, the building is for sale? That, that it's a commercial building that just got fixed up.
The little red door?
The red door building?
No, across the street from there.
Oh, okay, the batting cage?
It used to be a, a variety of things. But when that sidewalk got put in, we always maintained that section. Then there's a spot where we, things were planted and grass is growing and grass is.
Okay, I think I know where you're talking about now. And we have, over the last couple of weeks, we did go and mow that. But Rockbridge Road is maintained by DeKalb County in, in this area. It's, we don't have maintenance responsibility. I remember this issue came up about this time last year of where they were going to give us the maintenance responsibility with no money.
We don't want the road. We don't want the road, but what about that little grass strip between the road and the sidewalk? Does the, does the county maintain that?
They, yes, they, but they maintain it on their schedule and it's typically, they come out every six weeks. They send a litter crew out on a monthly basis. But they physically actually do some type of, you know, mowing or whatever in there about on every six to eight weeks.
So, so not to belittle just that one particular thing. Again, I think the general comment that I hear from residents is the city doesn't look good. And it's some of the routine maintenance projects. And I, I love that, and I keep saying, look at all the other things we're getting done. Cause we are, we've gotten some incredible things accomplished. But when people are talking about walking down the trail and I can't walk through the trail because it's getting so overgrown now.
That's silly.
I think this is a.
Come on, you can't walk through the trail because it's overgrown.
Let me, let me, let me say this though, you know, it is, we've had an inordinate amount of rain. Okay, and we've got two and a half people doing the maintenance here.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, we're, we're kind of fighting it back. And if you can't actually go out and maintain it because it's raining, then it's going to get to a point that you, you know, where you got it, you're playing catch up. And, and that happens, you know.
Right, and, and I, I, I understand, I understand that, I get that. What I'm just saying is this is what I hear from residents. It's, it just doesn't look like things are being kept up with. And I'm like, you know, we lose days and.
We lose days because of rain and now we're in, where we have, like, two weeks ago, we had a heat index over a hundred degrees. And we pri, at that point, we prioritize things that we had. We had an event going on down at the lake that we made sure that was taken care of. We make sure that the garbage is being picked up because that's a, a sanitation and health issue. No, we don't get to all the mowing all the time, but we try our best to get to the mowing all the time.
And I think.
Some other issues that go along with, with that also.
Right, and, and I think for, for me, it's also about, we're not doing a, a good enough job to educate people on why some of that is not happening in the, in the, the way they think it should be done. So I've heard people over time request of seeing some sort of schedule. Like are we going to be mowing once a month, once every six weeks? Are we mowing when we can? So some form of just public information that again, gives them an idea, we're on top of it.
Kind of like the priority zones that you laid out for us last year? Kind of like the priority areas that you laid out for us?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get with Ned and I, I know we had a conversation about, you know, placing links on, on, on websites and those types of things. And we'll see if that's something that we can get posted. But, you know, everything's going to come with a disclaimer because the things we do are weather related. I mean, just for instance, you know, we got pushed back, you know, about a month and a half on Oak Road simply because of the weather. But once we got a break in the weather, the construction happened very quickly. And, you know, and, and the project turned out pretty well.
Street sweeping was a great example of that, where you laid out a, street sweeping was a great example of that. You laid out a schedule and then of course it got pushed and you got a lot of pushback about that.
Issues, personnel issues, weather-related issues, those all play a part in what we have to deal with on a daily basis. We can have a schedule laid out in front of us with every intention of following it on a mon, on a weekly basis. But, you know, people get sick, people take vacation, you know, you know, uh. Stuff breaks down.
Perception is reality.
I got you.
And, and so for me, I think it's like if we, if we can do our due diligence to let people know we have a plan. And it's not saying we're not doing it because we hear from you all the time what's happening. And, but not every citizen is privy to all of that because they're not here. It's just how do we give them that hope that we've got it?
I also want to, oh.
Can I just say one more thing on that point? I'll give you an example and let's take the Public Works Building. The grass gets cut on a fairly regular basis, fairly regular. But what never happens is someone takes a weed whacker to the hill on forest. Or on, I guess it's magnolia, to the northern side of the property, there's a, a tree over there. And the stuff under that tree is feet high. Why doesn't the person who is mowing that area do the weed whacking when they mow the area? And the same thing would be true for areas around the lake. You know, there are trees on spruce just before you go over the little bridge thing. You know, where they mow around the trees, but they never weed whack underneath them. You know, that's maintenance that used to be done here on a regular basis. When somebody mowed, they weed whacked. You know, that's, that's the expectation. And people haven't forgotten, even though it's been probably three years since it's actually been maintained. That's the standard that people want to see again. We'll work on that.
I also wanted to say, I know, I feel like this is a conversation we've had in circles. When everything's a priority, nothing is a priority. And when we're constantly pushing at breakneck speed to get a proposal for this thing that had, you know, like the beach, the beach renovation, the beach house renovation is a great example of this. This came up at the last meeting. We had, it wasn't in the capital improvement plan, it hasn't been part of any discussions, but it became a priority in that meeting. And you were like, I'm going to put together something to have to you by your next work session, which was wonderful and it's very comprehensive. But as a council, that's diverting time and attention from other things. So for instance.
I think that's only because other items got moved forward as well.
Let me just finish my thought please. So for instance, if you're doing that, then how do you also do the maintenance schedule that has been on the table? How do you, you also move all of these projects forward with capital, you know, all of our capital projects? I, it's just to remember that time and staff resources are limited and there's a reason that we keep coming back to the discussion. we keep coming back to the discussion of how do we pace ourselves, both from a financial perspective and a staff resource perspective? So what's, I think this is, that's like the pattern or the theme of the night is what is the priority?
I would, I couldn't agree with you more. When we decided to move ahead with the firehouse, the public works, you know, projects that, yes, they were in the five-year plan, but they weren't all called out in our budget amendment. At least at the price that we spent on them or are planning to spend on them. The question of the beach house, which is the thing that the public actually uses comes up. But one of the things that, and I know I discussed this with Mr. Hawthorne, is we've become way too heavy on projects and far too light on day-to-day maintenance in this city. And it's a balance that I'm not seeing. I mean, do I wanna see a beach house project move forward? Yes, I do. Probably quicker than I'd like to see the Public Works Building done. You know, but what I'm not seeing done on any regular basis is the care of our green space. The actual care of our green space. I mean, we spent twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars on sheep last year to clear a berm. That's gonna have to get re-inspected to find out what repairs need to be done. It's so overgrown in just one year that it's probably gonna have to get cleared again so that can be done. And those bushes are already growing over the tops of the benches along the back berm. I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think Councilmember Goldberg was talking about that our residents notice when they walk around the city. I notice them when I walk around the city and they aggravate me to no end. You know, another example is we spent money on trash containers. There's a, there's a trash container that sits right behind the two retention ponds. You know the ones I'm talking about along Lake Shore Drive, the two retention ponds. There's an old trash container there with the rotted-out Pine Lake bird on it. It's, it's been rotting away. I don't know whether we still have any of those trash containers sitting up at the Public Works Department. But that would be a good place to replace that old rotten trash container that probably hasn't been emptied in over a month. And it's just, you know, that's where people throw the waste for their dogs. And even if it's not overflowing, those trash containers around the lake need to be emptied on a regular basis because of what's in them.
Thank you. Okay.
My pleasure.
I have just one comment.
We're very much off topic of this beach house renovation.
One is, I, I think, Mr. Kendrick, you, you've done an incredible and you do an incredible job with this. And I don't think, for me, part of this is, how do we let people know, as you have said, you're one, you're one person, managing department of one person? And yet we're still having all of these needs. And so, again, perception is reality for many people. But people also don't know the reality of what you were doing to juggle all of these different tasks and projects. And so I think it behooves us in some fashion and our administration to figure out a way that we could better inform people about that balance of what we're doing and what we're trying to do. And like, like I said about the property tax thing, it's also about how do we give people hope that they understand we've got it. There's, there's a plan and there's things being done. So again, I don't think we inform people well enough of what, yes, we realize we haven't been out there in two weeks because we've had rain every single day for two weeks. We haven't forgotten about it, but people think, oh, well, nobody's doing anything.
I think it is a fool's errand to put up the maintenance schedule for the public to see because as soon as you put it up, the first thing you're gonna get is twenty people telling you, you need to be doing something else and doing it differently and better and faster. And the minute that it doesn't get done on Tuesday afternoon at 5:00 PM, you're gonna get emails. And I think that we have a supervisor who can, that we can trust to do that. And as soon as we put out a maintenance schedule for just the general public to supervise Public Works, cause that's what it'll be. It'll be a lot of people that are retired and don't have anything better to do than to tell us what we're doing wrong and why our Public Works isn't doing a good enough job. And I just think it's, I think the place looks great. When you talk about how terrible it looks, I don't even know if we're living in the same place. I don't, how much more can we put into it at the same time that we're talking about we have to lower our mileage rate? But we're trying to get three hundred percent effort out of this already overworked, uh, small little department. So I, I don't think that a maintenance schedule's a good idea. And I don't think, you know, making all these demands when we're trying to save money, the longer we keep our city attorney here, it's money that we're wasting. And let's just streamline things. And this isn't the way to do it. It's just all this stuff all the time.
So I'm gonna move on, thank you for that discussion, to item number four in that, in the interest of everything. Pine Lake Snapfinger Creek Dam Inspection.
Okay. To revisit this, we did have a, from our previous consultant, plans drawn up and a proposal. And I think the proposal, I don't, I don't think the due diligence was done in order to figure out the exact problem with the dam. And now I think what we, you know, need to back up and actually have a a Georgia Safe Dam inspection done of the dam itself to find out if the proposed breaches in the dam are of such a significance and also place a cost estimate toward those, whatever the deficiencies are. Rather than move forward with a wholesale dam improvement. And I think the, the price tag that was on the previous thing was somewhere north of, you know, what, half a million dollars?
It was nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
And which I don't think, you know, even a visual inspection, I've been around a few dams, did support, you know, doing that type of work. So to spend about fourteen thousand, I think it's actually thirteen thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars for the actual inspection. And you're correct that the vegetation would have to be mowed down to at least, you know, between one, one and, I think he said, one and a half to three feet. But they do have a roadmap to part of the problem areas that they could focus on initially to give us a comprehensive inspection result and also generate an actual estimate if we need to do any improvement. And probably give us a timeline on, if, when and actually that needs to get done. I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near nine hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. To piggyback on that, just in terms of context, the previous city engineer, Councilmember Woods and I were walking with him in the, many years ago, before this bid set was created, the permit set, I believe. And out of the, out of the one walk along the back berm, there was a comment, oh, there are a lot of trees. This whole thing is gonna need to be grubbed and rebuilt. And I believe that was the, that was the through line in the design that was then put together and then went to bid. Then after walking with a different consultant and with you when you came on board, your immediate perspective was there's, there aren't, there's no reason to believe that this whole thing needs to be redone. Part of spending money on the sheep, it was mostly so that we could get to a place where we could clear any vegetation that was two inches or less DBH so that we could actually see what, now some, it's shrubby, that's true, but we can see where there are actually trees that could be in question and question, you know, puncture or in some way compromise the structural integrity of the dam versus areas where it was just overgrown vegetation. So that, I don't think that money was spent in not by any means, cause now you can actually see what is there. But if we're able to then limit from the inspection, like you're saying, we can limit the scope of work from the set that we already have, so we can say, okay, let's just focus on this one area where it may actually be compromised rather than a wholesale thousand feet of dam rebuild, which is what the original proposal was.
And I think the, kinda the visual, if we get the, the dam engineer that, that, you knew that was coming up. If we get the, the person who is specifically trained in this, that, you know, just like I said, I've been around dams before. You, you look some of the larger trees that where you would think, you know, are causing the problem, they're not actually on the face of the dam. They're actually down, on the shelf.
And they've been there for eighty years. Yeah.
And those, you know, don't pose any, you know, harm to the dam itself. So, you know, I think, you know, that kinda thinking we've already, you know, but there are some larger trees that...
Like those big privates that are there, yeah.
They, they might be the actual problem and you could probably count those on your hand.
It's a thirty-foot stretch. I measured it once.
Right. Yeah, so, I think we can, you know, this would actually allow us to refocus and get a better handle on what the actual problem is if there is really one. And, and you know, and have some real evidence behind it and then turn that into an actual project and then find an actual construction expert that, you know, does dam repairs. And I don't believe it'll be anywhere near nine hundred thousand dollars.
So it's addition by subtraction. Spend thirty thousand dollars to clear the vegetation, eleven thousand dollars to get an assessment. We've spent forty-one thousand dollars to not spend a million.
Yeah.
You could do the each house.
Maybe so.
It's actually like fourteen, I think the, the clear, you know, slope mow is, I believe, I didn't bring the, it was like fourteen. And then, so you're talking about around about twenty-eight thousand dollars to get this assessment and to actually, you know, put it on paper to say this where, where we need to focus. And, you know, and what the actual cost would be for the repairs if, like I said, once needed. And then, you know, move on from there.
Great. Thank you. I'm glad that that's moving forward, get it off the, off the docket there.
Could I just ask a question that kinda goes back to the clearing of things? And there was a, there was a comment that, that people are walking down the path and they can't see the lake. And my question is, that, that's by design apparently because those, that, that stuff...
That was Jeff's comment.
Yeah, but that, but that stuff grows up almost immediately to where you can't see the lake. So is there, I mean, either we clear that all off and some, I mean, you can't keep that stuff down long enough to see the lake.
Well, they're alder trees. They're, they're alder trees. They're meant, they're large shrubs that are twelve feet high.
So, I mean, but is, I mean, it was designed that way?
Those were planted.
And, I mean, if we don't like it, we can cut it down, but I thought it was designed that way. I mean, can we, can we also cut those down somewhat when we do the clearing on the other side? Since people are complaining about that or is that, I mean, I, I don't understand, what's an alder tree? Why is that, why is it special? I've heard that before, but...
I mean, they're, it's just a native tree. My point in saying that is that they're doing what they do. Like they are living their habit. You know, they're a multi-stemmed, twelve to fifteen-foot tall tree that was intentionally planted there when the lake was renovated.
So we can't expect that we're going to keep those from blocking the lake unless we decide we're gonna cut them all down.
They, in the past, were always cut down every year to the ground.
Certain time of year there.
At a certain time of year.
What, what my thought is with that is...
Which kept the growth minimal.
A lot of times with planting, we don't factor in what it would look like in ten or twenty years. And so I think they've gotten much larger than what we initially planned for. So yes, we, the plan was not to have a wall of alders.
And now, because they're so much larger, their root systems are much larger. So whereas chopping them down once a year, when they were first planted, they didn't resprout at the same rate that they do now. They're thicker, they have more root energy, they sprout faster. Another thing is that alders are nitrogen fixing. So every time we cut them down, we're releasing nitrogen into the lake which then affects algae and all kinds of other things. So it's, you know, like you're saying, maybe there's another plant or, is it an uphill battle?
I don't know, but I, I think part of, I, I, I just didn't get a chance to say anything. But the, the thing about, about keeping things up, I'm walking every day and I see this every day as well. That stuff grows from the day before to the next day. It's, it's grown out, you know, this much further away. And, and it does get cut back, but it grows right back again. So if we're, you know, if we're saying that we want it to be, you know, back behind the benches, I know it's growing up on the benches, but the bench is still there. I've noticed. It, it keeps getting, you know, cleared away. But we have to do something different because it's not something that anybody can keep up with, in my opinion. The way that the, the, what's on the, on the, that berm or the dam, what's there is gonna grow like that and it's not gonna, if you wanna go out there, you know, every week and, and clear it, that's one thing, but that's, that's a lot. So I just, I just wanted to add that in, cause I missed that, making a comment before.
Thank you for this report on the inspection. I imagine this will be on the voting session for the next, the proposals.
Mr. Kendrick, where, where was that socket from?
Good question.
Not telling, not telling. Alright, thank you. Oh, oh, I was gonna do public comment. If there is any, there's no comment or there's no public.
Public left.
Okay, come right on back up. Let's move on to strategic performance report.
If we're on strategic performance report and being sensitive to time this evening, I'd like to, to go through and probably in, in some order, that would like for the police chief, particularly with Officer Brooks still, still being here. But we're, we're gonna do the, the short version of every, everything. And my part of the report, just a couple of things to highlight. I'm, I'm very impressed actually with the sustainable development plans, or at least what I call them, the long-term plans that have been looked at in the last ten years or, or under. And, and this will be a recurring topic even as we grow this issue and, and discuss it at strategic retreats and as the budget comes up. Because we do have a blueprint that has been approved by this or past governing, governing bodies. So I, I didn't put these just for, for a reminder, but it's something that the staff and I will continue and, I shouldn't say continue, but certainly give some focus on the value of those reports and, and what, what Pine Lake continues to grow up to be and, and invest in and having those discussions with the governing body. And quickly, on the summer break, which is really just informational, I'm not even sure if we adopt an annual... uh, I'm not even sure if we adopt an annual calendar, I, I guess we do probably towards the end of the, end of the year, but I, I think it is a topic that, um, that you should consider for the future. My survey, um, particularly of those cities that respond, for the most part, they're on the same schedule that we are, meeting, uh, twice a month. Uh, so unique, Pine Lake, keeping up, uh, but you all work as hard as, um, you know, bigger complex, uh, places. Um, and some of them do build in some breaks, and we can still get it done. And I can't tell you that it, it, it really does offer refreshers for, uh, the staff as well and in planning their own, um, planning their own breaks. Uh, but just informational at this, at this time. Um, Ned submitted something to you that I think was, was fun, something that he's planning to, uh, present in the future just as a way of, as the, uh, acting city clerk, prospective city clerk, um, you know, making a connection with the, uh, with the public. And there's more that I'm going to be bringing to you, because that role, uh, and as council member Goldberg, uh, and we shared his passion, the need to not just communicate, but to strategically communicate. And, uh, our acting city clerk, uh, is, is young, uh, and learning, but talented and creative. Um, he is an absolute, um, future, um, strategic communicator, as far as I'm, I'm concerned. And, um, we are, we are working with the realignment of the organization and space issues that you may not fully appreciate the value of activating, for instance, the old city hall. Uh, but getting more and more out of, out of staff, maybe reshaping the kind of, uh, working arrangements that they've, that they've got now, um, but, um, making sure that people are, um, that, that we're getting the highest value of their talents and, and contributions. Uh, so I don't wanna take away from, uh, Mr. Dagenhart, uh, but I kind of speak for him this evening. Uh, before, um, Mr. Kendrick, uh, comes back up, I, I want to give the police chief, and I, I would ask both of them to, um, to, to do it in under ten minutes or less. Uh, but just to give you a, a broad perspective of some of what they wrote in the performance report, some of which Mr. Kendrick has already gone over already, but police chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, we appreciate you guys. Uh, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna break down my report into three, into three parts. We're gonna start with, uh, community policing stats, which includes just a close-up look on some of our calls to services that we receive and code and compliance, the fifty thousand dollar, uh, assignment. So as far as community policing, we have noticed a huge uptick in traffic-related violations, um, with a significant, um, increase in drivers using the, our brand-new, uh, lane that's supposed to help prevent traffic congestion and collisions, they are using that as a passing lane. So we've seen, uh, an uptick in violations in that, we had an accident, we had a couple accidents, uh, one of which was, uh, so bad, we locked down the intersection right at Allgood and Rock Ridge Road, and both of the drivers had to be transported to Grady for help, so.
Wow.
We're just trying to get the word out to let folks know that is not a passing lane. You know, we've even had folks that go as far up to the light, and you know there's nothing at the light, and just zip on over, and you have a car that's turning right there. So sometime if you see the guys kind of sitting in, you know, strategically sitting to where they're not blocking, uh, a driveway, you know, that that's what they're trying to do, and of course, we do that at certain times of day when, you know, traffic kind of picks up and people are tempted to hit those, uh, that, that turn-in lane. Uh, let's see what else, uh, so anytime we get a chance, we reach out and we try to, uh, update our social media footprint with safety tips, just reminding folks of their responsibility and that the rules are in place for all of us. Um, let's see, we have stats and a close-up on reports, you have a copy of this in your, um, folder, just kind of give you guys an idea of just the different violations and calls for service. I won't go back through all of them, but I will highlight a few significant events. Uh, we had, uh, wanted persons located, we had an armed individual at the Family Dollar. We do a lot of shoplifting reports over there, we also had, uh, quite a few, I have to see if we have a new moon, we had quite a few, um, mental health crisis, you know, um, that we had to deal with. We also had, uh, some domestic disturbance and a threat once again at the Family Dollar in progress. So that's where our foot patrols and our relationship with our merchants and our business owners come in, because most of them, uh, we encourage them to call nine-one-one, but most of them, after a while, call nine-one-one, will also reach out to the officers to let them know when they don't feel comfortable, sometime they sit in the parking lot while they walk to their cars, and just our presence, you know, really means a lot. And the guys are doing a really great job, because as you know, this is ours, this is our summer month when we're on stage, we got a lot of traffic here in the city, so just trying to be in five places at one time with one and a half vehicles gets to be a challenge, so. That is that for the stats, the exciting portion is the code enforcement. So what we've been doing is, you guys have heard me talk about this mysterious code enforcement officer, so I figured I'd bring him here so you guys can see him and look at him, and you see him riding down the street, you won't throw rocks at him if you see him in your yard. Um, the city manager, I'm gonna go a little off-script, the, the city manager's been really, really, uh, pushing on this code enforcement and not just, not just going out and writing tickets or going out and what do we have here, what do we have there, but as far as quality of life and creating something that's gonna be sustainable. Uh, we talked about the different initiatives that we have, and it's like, it's good for today, but can we keep this up? So that's the approach that I took with this code enforcement, because realistically, you know, we're struggling on paying our existence, folks. So what do we need to do to have a viable code enforcement program? So, um, we sat and we, we thought and we walked around, we looked at, at our code enforcement issues and concerns, and we came up with a step-by-step, which I'll be meeting with the city manager to just, uh, just, you know, get some of his insight on, you know, you know, the, the direction and how fast we wanna move this. But what we wanna do is do a, we're gonna have someone do a complete assessment, not just what we've been doing so far, but a, a comprehensive assessment of the city, which would include, um, what, what are our biggest concerns, not just as we see it, because we have, we're Pine Lake eyes, so we notice the trees and not always the potholes, we don't always notice the structure and, and so on and so forth. Um, the first thing that, that, uh, Officer Brooks provided me what was a copy of all of dilapidated buildings that we have, which are like sitting halfway in queue, like we're addressing some of the issues that we have right now, we're kind of sitting in, in queue for you guys to finish up and sign off on the, the ordinances that we're looking to pass. So, uh, we have that listing, which has kind of proved helpful, because what happens with us is that even though we have our concerns, we've also gone nose-blind to a lot of things, you know, that we don't notice unless somebody new comes into the city. So I wanna take advantage of these new eyes that we have and have him do a complete comprehensive overview, which is gonna cost, and then, once we go from there, then we have our, how we're gonna go about initiating it, and we'll just be keeping you guys, and not just you guys, we want the community involved, 'cause one thing that we noticed, he's been listening in on the last couple of, um, meetings, but one thing we noticed is that the emphasis is on compliance and education. So, you know, with the, 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 the millage raid and just the cost of living now, the last thing we wanna do is just, you know, beat folks down for money, but we wanna better educate them, because these rules and regulations that we have on the books are, they are for a purpose. There is, there is some method to the madness, like how you talk about the things that are, that are planted, some of them are high. Well, a lot of that protects the burn from erosion and washing away, where to me is just, I can't see, you know, but it may have a purpose. So just having a new set of eyes, just really digging in and being ready to, uh, implement which, and I'll just, little things like, um, after we get our assessment, um, I know the first thing that he notated was, okay, what's your process? Okay, what, you should have a dedicated vehicle, there's certain things that, and with the size city, it's like, okay, I could work with one of them souped-out, you know, carts or whatever, so that's gonna all fall in our budget along with the assessment, and then moving forward, once we get to that point, decide whether or not we wanna continue and have someone come in twice a week, you know, a couple of times a month, just to keep us, you know, keep us afloat and just for, for maintenance purposes. So without further ado, unless you guys have any questions, um, I'm, I'm gonna meet with the city manager, I think, uh, the week after next or whatever, and we're gonna just kind of lay it out. We're gonna have music and, you know, fireworks, we just gotta really figure it out.
It's wine.
And then we'll keep you guys, you know, updated, so you guys can help us be our eyes and ears to the community. Um, 'cause sometime we don't, we don't always know, you know, what are the concerns, we know what we see, but that's our ears and eyes to the community, you know, we put out a survey, then everybody says, I never seen the survey, and I'm like, really, I put it out twice. So just all of that, just using all our, our, our resources together to do that. So without further ado, I want you guys to, me, Officer Brooks, he's our code compliance officer, um, he's got code enforcement on his mind.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I'm Officer Brooks, uh, thirty-one, thirty-one-year veteran police officer, uh, four years, uh, code enforcement. Uh, I'm talking with Carl Vincent, I am a certi- certified code enforcement officer with Carl Vincent, Level One. I will have my masters this next March, that's what I'm working on at this point. Um, I do agree with Chief, um, as far as, um, the items she said that's needed to help beautify even more of Pine Lake. Pine Lake is, um, a unique, unique community, as far as I'll go and say, well, this needs to be cut, and I have one, I think he's an agriculture, so he said, dog, that's a, that's a, um, African such-and-such, they grow like this. I said, okay, he said, well, how you find this out, you, they'll, they'll do the grass a certain kind of way, and I was like, okay. So it's been a little process for me to learn that, but my, um, my, um, objective mostly is compliance, um, education, trying to get people to know what it, what it is to do and what not to do. When your grass is, um, overgrown the curves and such like that, those are things I go to them, educate them on them. I give out warnings, um, as much as possible, um, to a point to where I want you to know, this needs to be done. I may say, I'll be back next Wednesday, and I may not come back two Wednesdays later. And the reason for that, I'm giving you that opportunity of compliance to do that, I'm giving you that extra time to do it, so it says, maybe, nah, he's not, he's not doing this, well, I'm trying to give you that extra time. Um, like BK said, the rain or something like that, if it's raining, I'm not gonna mess with you, of course. Uh, I'm gonna give you that extra time to do that, so my, my biggest thing is compliance and educating you on what you need to know, anything like that. I'm Officer Brooks, if you.
Thank you, Officer Brooks, thank you.
We really appreciate all you're doing, it's, I, I can see a definitely different, definite difference already, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Are there, are there strategic performance report, reports?
I only have one other thing to add, uh, the fence on the tennis court is done, and the, uh, surfacing contractor will be here Thursday.
Great.
Um, to start the surface, I'm pretty sure it's gonna take him, I think he said, three days, and, uh, then we'll move forward. The, uh, street sweepers were here bumping the curbs today, they'll take tomorrow off because it's garbage day, and then they'll be back sweeping Thursday and probably finish up Friday.
Perfect.
But, uh, that's, yes.
Yes, real quick, and this may be more a question for Chief, but, um, what are we doing about the cars that aren't moving? That have been told and had the little sticker that says, get out of the way, please move your car, so that we can clean up?
Well, so far we haven't had that, so far we haven't had that problem, and I am. What I've been doing is, today I gave the contractors a map, so that they can map it out a little better, and kind of went ahead, uh, you know, the trash guys are coming, you know, and because I have a couple of numbers, I've been calling people and just reminding people, hey, keep an ear out, you see him come on, but we haven't had that issue just yet. What, what we'll probably end up doing is, um, the way we, the way we introduce the curb program is take advantage of this, because you are responsible for those curbs, and by the time they leave, if they're not done, now it's gonna be on you. So we, we've had some compliance in, in, in that respect, so.
Sweet, great, thank you. Thank you all for your, um, just hard work and diligence and effort and heart and all of the things, so thank you. Um, moving on to reports and other comments, um, I have a few comments I'd like to make. Uh, the first, uh, Mr. Kendrick, Oak Road has been a project on the docket for as long as I've been in Pine Lake. It's been an issue, um, we haven't had the social or professional capital to even get bids for many years, um, or the expertise to be able to do it within budget when we did get bids, and it's now complete, and that's a huge achievement, so thank you. Um, the, uh, I guess overall, I was just reflecting, we've spent this evening really talking about our priorities and our realities of being a small city, and I just commend this council for your work and your diligence. Um, we're getting a lot sharper on the process, I think the more we like file, you know, in discussion, the more we understand the roles in lane and, uh, how budget meets priori, sets priorities and, you know, how we, how we squeeze all the juice out of the lemon that we have, so. It's not a lemon, it's a delicious, delicious grapefruit. Um, and then I especially wanted to say, thank you to Chief. You know, uh, Mr. Hawthorne was talking about how you've been here and your salary does not nearly reflect the dedication of twenty-plus years of service that you've given to Pine Lake. I'm getting a little choked up, sorry. I was thinking specifically, you told me a story once of how, when you were nine months pregnant, wearing a bulletproof vest in a hostage situation at the post office, and how huge that is, what a big ask is made of our officers every single day in a really volatile world. And there's no price tag that you could put on that by any means, but I just wanna say thank you for your dedication. I've been really weepy these days. Um, I also was just thinking about, Mr. Hawthorne said something about how we have this magic here, and he doesn't understand how we do it, and I was thinking about how we now have a gratis, extremely experienced code enforcement officer on reserve, and that magic is largely your reputation and your professionalism, and your leadership, so thank you. Alright, that's all I got to say. Now it's on YouTube. Cool, council comment?
The strategic performance report keeps getting better and better and better. Thank you so much. Everyone.
Alright.
Um, I'll throw out one thing, um, ditto to everything that's been said. Um, I did reach out to the Georgia Power Arbors, who's in charge of the, they're still doing the work. Um, I had a phone call from a resident, uh, with some questions. Uh, what has happened is they had a issue with the previous contractor, and they got rid of them, and now Asplunk is here doing the work, and they hope to be done in the next month. I also sent him a photo of the large pine tree that was damaged by the tree that was taken down next to it. And he claims he's gonna come and take a look at that, um, because that should not have happened, in his words. So hopefully, he will tell me they could do something. I can't imagine what, 'cause the tree's already been hurt.
Thank you. Thanks for staying on top of that and, um, alright, information for the news blast. I know you've been taking some notes.
I'm just looking forward to the day in the very near future. As acting city clerk, I'm ready to pass the baton.
Who has a very relatable writing style, by the way. Love it. Okay, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Have a good night, y'all.